So did you get out there and dance?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your attendance at the school board meeting on Monday, November 25th, 2019. All board members are in attendance. Please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin, I would like a motion to establish a closed session upon conclusion of tonight's meeting of the school board.
Go move.
Second. Wait, I'm not done. The meeting will be closed as permitted by Section 13D Point 03 to discuss the district's labor negotiation strategy related to districts' negotiations with all bargaining groups. And since we've had it moved and seconded, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Thank you. Now, can we have your approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of approving the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Thank you. That brings us to recognitions of students, staff, and public. And our first recognition is the Jefferson Theater Company. And I'd like to invite Laura Schmidt to come up and tell us about the...
Actually, Gabe Hanson.
Oh, okay. Gabe Hanson, to the podium to tell us about your production.
Hello, everybody. My name is Gabriel Hanson, and I'm a senior this year with the Jefferson Theater Company. I'd like to tell you a little bit about our show. So, for the past month and a half, we've been rehearsing tirelessly for our upcoming production, A Christmas Carol, which opens this Saturday at 1:00 p.m. Also, in the good spirit of Christmas, we're running a Veep Preserved Canned Food Drive through the show. So if you bring non-perishable food items to the show, we can collect them at the ticket sales table. And now, without further ado, we have a little treat for you, a carol from the show. So go ahead, you guys. Take it away.
(singing) God rest ye merry gentlemen, let nothing you dismay. Remember Christ, our Savior was born on Christmas Day, to save us all from Satan's power when we were gone astray. O tidings of comfort and joy, comfort and joy. O tidings of comfort and joy.
One more time, we open this Saturday, November 30th, at 1:00 p.m. And I know I speak for myself and all of my castmates when I say I'd love to see you all there. Thank you again.
Thank you.
You.
Next, I would like to invite Andy Kubas to the podium. The school district is fortunate to have businesses, organization, and friends supporting our learners and the community of Bloomington. In appreciation of these collaborative efforts, the school board recognizes our friends of education. And Andy Kubas, our Executive Director of Learning and Teaching, will introduce our honored friend this evening, Mr. Gil Williams.
Chair Barlata, Superintendent Fujitaki, school board members, viewing public. You'll get no songs from us tonight.
(laughing).
Unless you plan to sing, Gil.
No.
No?
(laughing).
We have a time-honored tradition here that I think is very, very dear, and where we honor our friends of the Bloomington Public Schools. And that's something that we get to do tonight. I'm honored to sit by someone that I call a friend, in Gil Williams, not only professionally but personally, share a lot of good stories with Gil in our conversation. And so, Deb, can we get our PowerPoint up, please? While that's coming up, I'll just, I'll just say a few words. And so, I believe, as I started planning for this, I started thinking about the quote that it takes a village to raise a child. We've all used that in the education arena a lot. And I took it upon myself, I got into an internet rabbit hole where I started to think, but where did that really come from? Did it really come from, you know, I've heard it's an African proverb. I've heard lots of different things. And the best that I could attribute it to was from Toni Morrison, who said in a book in the, in the early eighties, that something along the lines of, it doesn't, a single parent can't raise a child, two parents can't raise a child, it takes an entire village. And so, with me, to, to my right is Gil Williams, who is, who signifies that village. So for many, many years, has, has been a great friend of Bloomington, as well as the Bloomington Public Schools. And so, while all this, oh, here we go. And just one more slide then. Let me tell you a little bit about, about Gil. And so, one of the first things, when I came over from Valley View Elementary School, one of the first things that I did, I think on my second day at the district office, the superintendent took me over to meet Gil Williams. Gil owns a business called Williams &amp; Associates. It's on the frontage road between Niclet and Portland by 494 there. It's a nondescript building, but a fascinating business that happens in there. He's in the transportation and the technology business. And, like I said, it's just, it's just fascinating to be there. As I think about, you know, getting to know Gil and, and all the things that are, that are happening there, I start to think about all the ways that he's contributed to Bloomington, as well as the Bloomington Public Schools. And so, I'm going to leave some stuff out, Gil, because we could honestly be here all night talking about the things that, that he's done. But just personally, you know, contributing to Meals on Wheels, Veep, bridging, and Artistry. Gil is one of the drivers that got Artistry and the Bloomington Public Schools together. And so, he's a big believer in the arts, a big believer in the school district, and bringing those two entities together. I've been a recipient of a grant where it was written in the grant that we would work with Artistry. Artistry works and is prominent in our schools today, you know, at Hillcrest with the Artful Learning, at other, Valley View Elementary and Valley View Middle. There are murals there. And then I'm going to talk about one particular project that Gil funded out of his own pocket that was run through Artistry as well, that has just been so significant in everything that we're doing. Gil's also the president of the Bloomington Community Foundation, a board that he's been on since 1994, and is very influential there, as, as he is in charge of, quite frankly, directing resources to the village. And so, in knowing where those, where those necessities are. We go to the next slide, please, Deb. Two things I want to talk about before we start the video. There are two projects, and again, we really could talk all night about the things that, that Gil has done and why we get to call him a friend, why we have that privilege. Two things I want to highlight, though, the one is that you see just in front of you, Wing Young Huey. So every seventh grade student at Valley View Middle School gets to have an experience, a week-long experience with Wing Young Huey, who is an artist from Minneapolis. And what Wing Young Huey talks about is just helping kids understand how not to be a stranger to somebody else, and getting to know the person. So I remember very well being a seventh or eighth grader. I identified myself as an athlete, and I didn't know very much about the people who identified themselves in a different way. And as a principal of a middle school, I would be able to walk in and I could see where kids sat based on how they identified themselves. And so, what Wing Young Huey tries to do is break those things down and get us to know everybody for who they are. And so, I'll let Wing talk, and then we'll, we'll come back. So go ahead, Deb.
It's been my pleasure to work with so many students these past several years, working with staff, and especially working with Mary Moller, one of the best teachers I've worked with. I've learned a lot from Mary. I show students what I do so that they can do it. I walk down the streets, and I talk to strangers, engage them in a conversation, handing them a chalkboard. I have students do this. When they, when I tell them I photograph strangers, they all think that's creepy. I'm trying to redefine what a stranger is. We are the strangers. So they pair up with a fellow student they don't know. I give them questions to start the conversation with, open-ended, open-ended questions such as, what are you? What defines you? How do you think other people see you? What don't they see? What do you want to be? How will you get there? What do you hope for? They pair up, they have a conversation, and at first it's awkward, but then they start to have fun and get to know each other. And then they write something revealing on the chalkboard, something that shows how they look at life. And then they share it with each other and photograph each other. And so, they get to know each other, and I feel that's not easy, to be able to go below the surface, to have a conversation, and to try to understand each other. If we all walked around with our chalkboards, we'd look at each other differently. We all have backstories. Thank you so much. I hope to work together again with you in the future. Appreciate all you've done. Thank you.
So that amazing experience has happened for over 1,000 seventh graders so far, every seventh grader at Valley View Middle School. And so, again, I'll take you back to, as scary as it is, to my childhood for a second. Again, I told you how I identified myself. It wasn't until my uncle took me to downtown Toronto, the Pantages Theatre, to see Phantom of the Opera. I went kicking and screaming because that is not what I wanted to do. That event changed my life because I got to see a different part of life. I got to understand and respect a different part. I can't imagine how many seventh graders, Gil, because of your contributions, have had that same epiphany, who see kids differently, who see experiences differently. And that's because of your friendship and your, and your generous donation. The other piece that, that I'd want to share is around the Nature Center. So Gil, out of his own pocket, donates to Valley View Elementary School and Valley View Middle School so that every student gets to go to the Nature Center. Incredible, when you think about it. Again, when, I've been in front of this board before and talked about how important it is for kids to have experiences, the experience of being able to go to somewhere they might not have ever gone before. How many artists do we get out of the 1,000 seventh graders so far? How many people are going to choose that path based on the experience that Gil's friendship has given us? How many botanists, how many environmental specialists are we going to get out of the, of the kids who are going just to be exposed to this? What a tremendous impact you've had, Gil, on, on us as it, as it comes to that. When I think about President James Buchanan, he said, "The test of leadership is not to put greatness into humanity, but to elicit it, for the greatness is already there." And I think that's the work that people who understand that village concept do. They don't try to put greatness in. They give experiences for kids to elicit it out. And your actions have done that. Two last things before, before we close off, some interesting facts. And so, our crackpot investigator, Deb Uncle, found that Mr. Williams was a school board member. He sat in the chairs that you sat in, or figuratively speaking, of course, in 50 years ago, in 69, 70, he was a school board member. So we spent, we spent some time just before the meeting reminiscing, incredible memory. He remembered everybody on the board and everything that they did, so be careful what you say.
(laughing).
But really, really interesting experience. And so, this whole piece of giving isn't new to Mr. Williams. This is something that is who he is. The second story I want to share is actually, I found quite funny. And so, we're in Gil's office talking about his long history of giving. And so, Gil grew up in, in the world of agriculture. His dad was very good in the fields and oftentimes was, was hired to, to do work at different farms. And so, that was part of who he was. When he became, you know, in a place where he could give back, he gave a tremendous scholarship to a student who wanted to, to go after a four-year agricultural degree. And so, made sure that that happened. And a reporter caught wind of it and called Gil and said, "Wow, this is pretty incredible. Do you think that I could write this in, in, in the newspaper?" And Gil said, "No, that's not, that's not why I'm doing this." And we know that most people who give don't do it for that reason. He was doing it for the right reasons. Well, in a parallel world at the same time, in Pine Island, where Gil graduated from, from high school, his mom served in the lunch line, helped out there. Well, the agriculture teacher came down and said to his mom, "That's pretty special, what Gilbert did, gave all that money for a scholarship." And Gil looked at me and said, "I might as well told the newspaper reporter."
(laughing).
Because the same amount of people found out. So I found that funny. And again, like I, like I said, the people who give from their heart don't do it for the accolades and don't do it for a night like this. Deb, we go one more, just to, let me, let me just explain something quick. So one of the great things in my, in my relationship and friendship with Gil is what I've realized is he really loves, really all he loves are the thank-yous. And so, I drop off as many thank-yous as we can. It's, it's part of the acceptance from Valley View Middle and Valley View Elementary that we all write thank-you cards. Gil spends some of his time in Arizona, so the last time I dropped off thank-yous, I think that's where he was, and his administrative assistant, when I brought the box, he said, "Oh, my gosh, he's going to love this." And so, in the spirit of that, we at Valley View Elementary School here, Gil, all of the students in third, fourth, and fifth grade who have just a 15-second message to say to you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams!
Thank you, Mr. Williams. And so, those kids know, they realize the opportunity that they've been given, and we're proud on behalf of Bloomington Public Schools that all you've done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Just briefly, one comment. I'm not sure when I was a school board member, what we did wrong, because we had packed audiences. There's nobody here tonight.
(laughing).
I think Jim probably can remember the concern Bloomington Tax Spirits Association. And we, we couldn't even fit in the board room. We had to hold our board meetings over at Olton Elementary School, or Junior High, I should say. I appreciate the honor. I, I think the partnership with Artistry and the school district has just been a win-win-win, you know, really for our board members, which I have to keep pumping up to them to make sure we keep supporting it. And I, also, I think for the students. And, and the thank-you notes are just incredible. I appreciate it. Thanks much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And while you were speaking, we put a, Gil, while you were speaking, we put your name up on the wall in the back there, if you want.
Right in the middle.
Thanks.
Thank you, Gil. All right. That brings us to our reports by student representatives to the school board. Who would like to go first? Do you care? Ally?
Okay, so I'm Ally Starks. I'm Kennedy's student representative to the school board. So to begin, Reggie Dabs visited our school with an inspirational program that included tough conversations, as well as music. And he brought Chick-fil-A for our students. So that was fun. Finals week, we just concluded that. And with that, trimester one, thank goodness, it's over. And so, we have a nice break with this. Thank you to the calendar committee for this week-long break.
(laughing).
Yeah, it's real nice. Winter sports started, so all of our teams had tryouts. And girls' hockey actually has had six games so far. It's Kennedy and Jefferson combined, and they're 2-4. And our girls' basketball team is 0-1 right now. Coming up next week, we have the Kennedy Has the Holiday Show, which is on December 5th, 6th, and 7th, all at 7:00 p.m. And performances from the Kennedy Curricular Choirs, which is chorale, chorale, vivovoces, and cantare. And then our a cappella choirs, Cambrio and Sorella, which I am in. And then Virtu Brosos, which is the men's a cappella group, and Valley View Voices, which is Valley View's show choir. So I encourage you all to go. It's, we've been working really hard for it, and it's going to be super cool. And now, onto what you can probably expect. We had our first-ever Bloomington Glows Dance hosted by the Board Student Advisory Council, which me and Shante co-lead. The goal of that was to unite Bloomington into one Bloomington in a fun event that also celebrated the end of the first trimester. So we collected food for Veep, and 30% of the profits will go towards Veep in this season of Thanksgiving, knowing that some families can't afford to have that Thanksgiving feast that a lot of us are lucky enough to have. We sold over 500 tickets from both schools, like combined, total, not 500 from each, clarification. So, and over the course of preparation, we had over 50 students from both the high schools plan and set up for the dance. And 32 were at our first meeting, which is like a record number of people we've ever had at a BSAC meeting. Our sponsors included the Bloomington Education Foundation, the Kennedy Community Alliance, the Jag Den, and Christ the King Lutheran Church in Bloomington. And what I took away from it was, I would love for this to be an annual event. Overall, there's really positive feedback. It was super uplifting to see the posts on Snapchat from the dance saying it was lit, and they felt sorry for the people who didn't go. Clarification, lit means exciting, fun, pumped up, et cetera, for those of you who don't know. And I'd like to thank you all for your support, whether that meant being physically at the dance or cheering us on in the background, or seeing if we needed anything in a series of emails and such. Shante and I really appreciate it, and the dance wouldn't have been possible without that. You guys showed us how to literally be adults and work with money and work with people and organization. So thank you all, Superintendent Fujitaki, everyone here. Thank you. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
All right. So again, calendar committee, awesome for this week. Really appreciate it. A lot of, a lot of stuff I was going to talk about, luckily, my lovely Ally covered for me. But regards to Jefferson, Bloomington Crime Prevention Association donated $2,500, and we decided to put that towards our after-school tutoring program, which is really, really great, because I myself use it. So it's awesome. The Jets took third place in state in adapted soccer, and Isaac Harnold was also selected as a member of the Wells Fargo All Tournament Team. Winter sports also kicked off for Jefferson. JHS Cheer Squad won game day at the Hoosier Championship. And again, as you all know, A Christmas Carol will be kicking off this weekend. And next weekend, you'll see me there, that's for sure. Don't forget to bring your Veep items. And then lastly, obviously, she covered all the, the good stuff. But just to talk about my experience with the dance, I don't have any concrete numbers right now for how much we made, but I will within this week, hopefully. My, the reason why I wanted to have the dance was I've, I've had this vision since 10th grade of having this joint dance. Like, I know we have prom, but I said I want something that everyone can go to, because quite frankly, what BSAC, what, what me and Ally pulled from BSAC is that our whole meaning and objective is to break the stigma between the two high schools. A lot of, a lot of the times, you just think it's, it's not, how, how do I say this, stupid. I, it's always good to have a good rivalry among the sports, a nice healthy rivalry, but when it gets interpersonal on a level where it shouldn't be, we think it's kind of not worth it. So this dance, we thought was a perfect opportunity to bring us together, show that both schools know how to get jiggy with it, if you know what I mean. And I've been envisioning this for years, and the fact that I, Ally and I got to work on this, and I have literally over months of work compiled in this folder right here of the whole dance, and the fact that all of that paid off, and all of the hard work that I got to see members put in, including board members, I want to thank you guys too, again, put into this dance and watch us and cheer us on from the background to see this happen, watch this happen, to know that this was all done by the student body is something that's so spectacular, and that shows that you should never underestimate the average teenager, because this dance, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I'm just saying. The, this dance really put what can be possible without the BSAC members and without, again, the two, this position that we are so honored and grateful for, that you guys gave us. So I want to thank you. I know I said it like five times, but again, thank you so much for giving us this position and the opportunity, this platform, to do exactly what we want with the community. And lastly, we're not done. This is, this is just the kicker. This is just the kicker.
This is the first trimester.
This is, we're not done. Next, the next thing on the BSAC agenda is actually trying to work on a foreign exchange program where we go even farther, trying to break that stigma between the two high schools, where we have an idea of having a Kennedy student go to Jefferson for a day, and a Jefferson student going to Kennedy, vice versa, to see that it's not what you think it is. It's not, Jefferson's not all, you know, we're not going to go into it. But, you know what I mean, you know what I mean. Other than that, yeah, that's, that's, that's a big thing. Thank you.
Maybe you shouldn't call it foreign exchange, then. Maybe we should.
Student exchange.
Because student exchange, I think is what we were looking at.
Intra-district exchange.
That's good. Anyway, we were happy to help you. It was a great time.
So much, really.
We were happy to see all the kids having fun.
So glad.
Anything else? No? Shante needs to be dismissed for the evening.
Sorry. I'm sorry.
Another appointment, so thank you for your work.
Of course.
This brings us to the public recognition part of our meeting. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing no one come forward, I'll ask, are you from a government class?
No.
No. So I'm not going to read this.
(laughing).
All right. Oh, thank you. All right. That brings us to part eight of our agenda. Someone like to make that motion?
They're moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Part A is our board business, minutes, personnel, actions, field trips, grants, agreements, and our finances. All in favor of part A, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? None. Thank you. Part B, we'll start with high school graduation fees. Would someone like to move that resolution?
I'm sure. It resolved, the school board of Independent School District 271 approves a graduation fee of $60 per student for Kennedy High School and Jefferson High School for the 2019-2020 school year.
Second.
Mr. Superintendent, would you like to tell us about it?
Yes, a few, two things. District administration, consultation with the high school administration recommends no increase to the fees. According to statutes, graduation fees are not charged for the caps, gowns, and diplomas. They're charged for the rental of facilities and to pay for other expenses.
Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? None. Brings us to our policy review. New policy 899, service animals and therapy dogs in schools. Someone like to move that resolution?
Madam Chair, it resolved, the school board of Independent School District 271 approves new policy 899, service animals and therapy dogs in schools.
Second. Thank you. And our Executive Director of Special Ed, Jennifer McIntyre, is here to tell us about it.
Thank you, Chair Barlata, Superintendent Fujitaki, and members of the school board. We have brought forward a new policy, and as Director Sorm said, it was a new policy 899 for service animals and therapy dogs in school. As many of you know and have been able to visit, we have our therapy dog Radar, who is here at Oak Grove Middle School. And then we have a therapy dog who has joined us over at Kennedy named Journey. Mr. Kaufman does a much better job of singing that song along with the word Journey. I cannot, and maybe our, kind of our show choir come back and sing that would be nice. But we did find that we needed to put forward a new policy to just establish some guidelines for, and the workaround when we do have a service animal, a service dog join us in one of our schools.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Yes.
Sure. I'd like to compliment Jennifer and Rick Kaufman for putting together this new policy. As some of you know, that we've had Radar and Journey in the schools, and the stories behind the success of having a dog in there. However, there's been some controversy in social media and other newspaper articles about why do we need therapy animals in the schools? And as Jennifer and Rick went through a whole series of gathering information from various other schools, institutions, I dare say, some airlines and other things like that, it was quite a comprehensive review that they went to. And then to be able to put it together in such a way that we can use it in our schools is quite an accomplishment. And as you read through and see the regulations and a variety of, of sentences in the policy and regulations, it's quite comprehensive, and I think covers just about all of the aspects of having therapy dogs in our schools. And so, I'm definitely in support of this policy.
Thank you. Anyone else? Director V.
And I really attest to this, because after our incident at Ken, at Jefferson, it was really wonderful. There's a community service dog that was brought in. And it was wonderful to see the calming effect of that dog. And I know that if Radar had been over there or Journey, that there would have been a great opportunity for them to really help calm kids. I'm really for this. I really am thankful that we have a district that welcomes service dogs that we have, and also gives clarity as to what is a service animal. And that's really important. Thanks, Jennifer.
Anyone else?
I just want to add something else, too, because it has been ongoing about putting this policy together. And as we know, we're very sensitive to all and as we know, we're very sensitive to all students. And every once in a while, a student might be allergic to a dog, or a student might have some kind of problems with it, but there is a control mechanism in place to take care of any of the isolated incidences that might occur. And so, it's just a matter, the dog doesn't just wander through the schools, but it, they're available when needed. And so, that helps contain any kind of concern that parents or others might have about a dog or an animal in a school.
Director Stigga.
Yep, along with that, I really appreciate that it also outlines, let's say, animals that don't qualify and aren't part of the ADA and aren't gonna be, just, because, you know, there seems to be some of that going on around the country now of, you know, I'm just gonna randomly bring my whatever and say it's my emotional support. And, you know, that's, to me, that's a real safety issue, because those, many of those are not trained. And, you know, I have, we have experience with my family, with not at school, but with someone that said they had an emotional support dog, and it went after a family member. So, I really appreciate that you also included clear guidelines and how, where they have to show proof and, and that type of stuff before the, so a dog can just, you know, show up at school one day, or another animal. So, thank you.
Thank you, I do have to say, Mr. Kaufman is not here tonight, and he really was the author of a lot of this policy. And we worked also with Hannah Hatch in our Health Services, many of you know Hannah Hatch, and so the three of us worked together on it. But I, and Mr. Kaufman wasn't able to be here tonight, but he did really do a lot of that research we're talking about. So, I'm thankful to have such a good team that we've been able to work with, so.
Anyone else? Hearing no further discussion, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Brings us to revised policy 427, workload limits for certain special ed teachers. Would someone like to make this?
Madam Chair?
Please.
It resolved the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves revised policy 427, workload limits for certain special education teachers.
Second. Thank you. Jennifer?
Yes, so I bring forward to you the policy for workload limits for certain special education teachers. This is an MSBA mandatory policy. We did, we have used the MSBA model policy to, to framework this. We've worked with the Policy Committee to add a little bit of information to be specific within the needs, as we outline them, for determining workload for our teachers that fall underneath this policy. And it was, it was a nice, a good, robust conversation, I would say, around how do we really look at this policy and be able to identify how we look at workloads for student, for some of our special education teachers that are not outlined in state statute on special education workload limits. Are there any questions about this policy?
More of a comment, we had a pretty large conversation on this, because when you're looking at the policy, you know, it says the workload limits for certain special education teachers, but it doesn't have any outlined limits in there. So, we were kind of like, well, why, that doesn't make any sense. So, we had to do some research on the policy, and that we are required to have this policy, but we're also advised not to put the limits in there and give up managerial rights. So, it's kind of like, we have to have this policy, but the policy doesn't really say what we have to do. So, it's, it's kind of an odd policy. So, I don't know, as you guys were reading it, you might have that same question, like, well, where are the limits? And that's why you don't see them in there, is because we're advised not to put them in there. But we have to have the policy anyway. Does that kind of sum up?
It does.
I also am on the committee, and I think, I think what was added, this was lacking under part B of the general statement, where it says, in order to ensure that there is not excessive workloads, you know, wanting to make sure that there's a balance, and that if you have a student who has, you know, greater needs within their family, as well as within their needs at school, that that particular special ed teacher is able to give that time, and that they're not given too many of those, so that they have to spread themselves thin. And so, this is a protective measure, I think it's, it's really good to preserve our special ed teachers so that they don't get overloaded, and that they will stay with us, and they are, you know, respected for their capacity.
Anyone else? Hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? None. Thank you. That brings us to revised policy 603, curriculum development.
It resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves revised policy 603, curriculum development.
Second.
Our Executive Director of Learning and Teaching is here to tell us about this.
Hello again. I bring forth you policy 603, which is been reviewed through the Policy Board. A couple of highlights that I want to just outline for you. One of the things that we're adding to the policy is just making sure that we understand it's a continuous improvement when we get to curriculum development. Gone are the days where we adopt the policy, and then seven years later, I'm sorry, adopt the curriculum, and then seven years later, we look at it again, and the world's changing too fast. So, this allows us the opportunity to be able to, to highlight the fact that we're gonna continuously improve it. It also puts procedures in the policy about how we're going to look at new curriculum and review the existing curriculum. And then you'll also find it some updated phraseology. No longer are there benchmarks, there are essential standards, et cetera.
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Please. Hi, so I know there's been like a lot of, like, focus and like concern around like the personal growth plans. So, how have you guys been like looking at that, and like looking at how we're like doing those, and like how you guys are improving those?
Yeah, I, I don't have, like, I'm not in charge of the personal growth plan, but certainly been part of conversations around the personal growth plan. So, I'll say that we've done some work, every year, we just take a look at where the, where is the best fit, what advisory, what classes, and that, that work continues to happen. So, I've often used the analogy, when I was in charge of the PGP, of the iPhone, and how the iPhone one is way different than the iPhone 11, that every year, you just kind of figure out what people need next and make those changes. So, the, the PGP, where it fits and, and how it works is under constant study and discussion, much like the iPhone is. And so, I know what's happening. I would defer maybe to the, to the Superintendent around conversations about the PGP itself. If you have anything more to add, Mr. Superintendent?
No, I think what you said, we continue to evolve it and work with students and teachers on how we can approve it.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? None. All right, that brings revised policy 606, instructional material selection. Madam Chair? Please.
It resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves revised policy 606, instructional material selection.
Second.
Bring you policy 606 on instructional material selection. So, a couple of things I would highlight, is the word primary. So, making sure that the School Board understands that, that they are in charge of making decisions on primary curriculum. And again, this, this policy went to the, the Policy Review Committee as well. Other things that I would add is, what's in this policy is how we do the material selection. That gets outlined in this policy as well. As part of the committee conversation, I think something, a thing I'd like to highlight was the role of the DDAC. That conversation came up in our, in our committee, and I was given the opportunity to go back and talk to Dean Wade Ardenley, and just have another conversation about the importance of the DDAC and its role in making sure that as we make material selection, that, that they're heavily involved in that conversation. So, I thank the policy, uh, Committee for those conversations.
Andy, just for the folks that are watching at home who may not understand the acronym DDAC.
District Diversity Advisory Council.
There you go.
Thank you.
Yep, we, we understand it, and it's, it's language that we've learned a while ago, but I know we have a large viewing audience, and they're wondering what that means, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else, questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Thank you.
Thank you. One more, revised policy 720, vending machines.
This is what I'm here for.
That's why it's less.
Madam Chair? It resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves changes to the policy 720, vending machines.
Second.
Thank you. Rod Zepkovic, Chair Executive Director of Finance and Support Services is here to talk about this.
Chair Barlata, Superintendent Fujitaki, Board Members, very minor changes on this policy. All that was done was kind of change it into the most current format that we've been using throughout.
Other question?
Madam Chair, if I may. I would just like to just give a quick shout, a shout out of thanks to the Policy Committee. I know each time that we do policy review, they kind of come and they go quick. They're not, not often a lot of questions, and again, addressing the viewing audience, we have a three, three-board member Policy Committee that works over every one of these policies, and there's lots of conversation that happen when they form the language. Credit was given to, to Mr. Kaufman for a, a policy earlier. There's a lot of research, a lot of, of, of conversation that happens behind the scenes before this, the policies make it to us. So, by the time they get here, they've already been thoroughly vetted, and, and if we don't ask a whole bunch of questions, it's because we, we should have asked them earlier. And I, I apologize to Rod, I tracked him down during a meeting, before this meeting, to ask a question on this, this particular policy. So, I appreciate you answering my question, and I appreciate the work that the Policy Committee does behind the scenes for these policies.
Director Bennett?
For our large viewing audience that Dick referred to earlier, could you just kind of do a brief overview of like how many vending machines we have in the district, what kind of items are in the vending machines, those type of things?
We have a total of 29 water or beverage machines, and then we have a total of eight snack machines within. What's in each of those, some of them are in, in staff lounges, some are in mainly the high schools. Basically, what's in it are the snacks that are allowable, both through legislation, and also that meet our wellness policy.
And as long as the Rice Krispies aren't going anywhere, I'm fine. I encourage you guys to move this, so.
Are they the Rice Krispie treats, or is like, that meets our wellness policy?
They aren't the big ones.
I think we'll be bringing that policy up for viewing.
I know where it is.
Anyone else, questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Thank you.
Thank you. Four-member reports. Who wants to go first? Director Bennett?
So, yeah, a few weeks ago, I, I had the, the privilege, I guess I should say, of being a chaperone on the Norman Hills. Went to Camp Otterbonne for two days of experiential education up in the, the North Woods. And I think it's just, it's a remarkable experience, as you know, as Andy was talking about earlier, about giving those kids those experiences that wouldn't otherwise necessarily have them. And one of my, my favorite moments of that event was, we had this new kid, who's only been in the country for, I don't know, a month or two, and he speaks Portuguese, so he's kind of, there's no one else there that speaks Portuguese, so he's kind of on an island on his own, but he came anyway, and he's learning about wolves and the woods. And then, the last night we were there, myself and the other dads, we decided to make smores, and of course, he had no idea what a smore was. And he ate that, and it was just watching those experiences that he wouldn't have had without us going to Camp Otterbonne. It's just, it's a remarkable event, and I really appreciate that Norman Hills is keeping that tradition alive. I think they are the last school that is still doing it. I think it used to be more schools in the past. And one of the reasons is because of the teachers there that support it, because the teachers have to go to be, you know, to, to run that outfit or the organization, so they have to give up their own time with their family, and they're gone for, for two nights. So, I really want to, you know, give a, you know, shout out to the staff that went out there. So, Mr. Baker, and Ms. Rayling, and Ms. Cleo, who were there, and it was awesome. And also the other parent volunteers that came to be chaperones, so it was a lot of fun. And then also this last Saturday, as we all know, we had the, the Unity Dance. And if you saw me at the dance, probably saw me smiling, because I was just so proud of, of our two representatives that were able to pull this off, and it was just an amazing thing. I mean, I was so happy that, because when, just a little bit of history, when I first came on the Board, we didn't have BSAC. We had the YAC, the Youth Advisory Council, and that was more, more Board-directed, where the Board would go meet with students two or three times a year with agenda items to get their feedback. So, it was very Board-driven, and it was more of a focus group. And then, when I came on the Board and went to the MSBA Conference, and one of the breakout sessions was student School Board members, and something I didn't even know existed, and I was like, this is amazing, I want to do this in Bloomington. Came back and I talked to the Superintendent, he thought it was a great idea. And then I brought it to the Board, and it's kind of mixed, mixed views, but one person who really loved the idea was Rick Oliva. And so, he and I kind of had this vision of changing the Youth Advisory Council, make it more of an action group. And instead of us coming to them and asking them what they think about district, we said, we want you guys to be in charge of it. What, do you see what's wrong in the district, and how do you think you can fix it? And that's exactly what, what these two did. And I know some people watching might say, oh, this had a dance, how hard is that? And anyone who has ever tried to do anything in a public school district knows that there's layers and layers of bureaucracy and red tape, and so many things that they have to do, like how many chaperones they need, and get custodians, and get the DJ, and the rental equipment, and police officers, and it was, it was just amazing that they did this all themselves. It wasn't us on the committee, we kind of like sat back, and, and we could have jumped in to help them, but we're like, no, we want to watch, this is their learning chance, so we let them struggle, you know? We kept, we kept in constant contact, like, okay, what else you need, what else is going on? But we didn't jump in with the solutions, we wanted them to find those solutions. And they did it, and they didn't get frustrated, they didn't quit, they showed that they can accomplish great things. And, you know, I know their vision was to unify the two high schools, but I think it really went beyond that because of all the supportive community that came out to make this successful. So, you had School Board members coming out to be chaperones, you had, you know, ESC staff, we had, we had Deb Bunkolt and Kate Martin that were there all night, that were kind of taking point, making sure everything was done right. We had, you know, BFT out there, we had teachers out there, we had Patrick Martin from the City Council. So, it really was One Bloomington, and it was, it was this remarkable event. And I, I don't know, I could go on all night about it, but it was, it was awesome, it was so awesome, that I had to call Rick Oliva, say, dude, you gotta come see what our kids are doing. Because, and he came out, and he was just like, this is amazing, that's what we envisioned five years ago, and here they are doing it. So, and I, I love how they said, this is only the first trimester. At the beginning of the year, I think the three of us that are on the BSAC, Nellie, and Bethan were like, these girls are gonna do amazing things this year, and here they are, not disappointing. So, I'm just so proud, and still looking forward to see what else they do, and that's all I got.
To the banner that?
Oh, we got the beautiful One Bloomington banner back there that they got everyone to sign. That was Patrick Martin's role, he was supposed to get them to sign, and you, and you can tell he's, he's not a, not a parent yet, because he doesn't have that father voice, he's like all kind of, I'm like, dude, you gotta, you gotta sound off, or they're not gonna listen to you.
Said, you can sign it if you want, only if you want, like, just go enjoy the dance, enjoy.
So, he was really impressed, and he's talking to the City Council, and he, and he thinks that we need to do some type of recognition for our, for our students, for all their hard work, so hopefully that's in the works, and.
He said that he would like to borrow the banner for a City Council meeting.
Yeah, and walk through the City Council meeting with the banner up there, so that they can see it also.
Yeah, because we got the City Council, because when we're looking for chaperones, I emailed them, I was like, this is your guys' vision of One Bloomington, and these are, you've inspired these students to take your, your model, One Bloomington, put in action, so this is One Bloomington action, you guys need to be here for this. And so, Patrick came, and he was just really impressed. So, thank all the board members for showing up too, that was, that was so much fun. And the new, newly-elected Board members were there as well, so I don't mind forgetting anyone, but anyway. I'll shut up now.
All right, you have the lone report. Anyone else? I will start at the end.
I'll be the last, go ahead.
Okay, Dick, go first.
Okay, well, I, I just pared it down to one. I had an opportunity to attend Minnesota School Board Association's, their version of Coffee and Conversation. It was, let me see, it was Friday, last Friday, up in Roseville, up at the Roseville Community Center. It's a, it's a quarterly Coffee and Conversation where. It's a quarterly Coffee and Conversation where board members from around the state can get together and share kind of, how do you do it where you're from? How do you do this where you're from? What about this, what about that? There's usually two or three topics, there's coffee to begin with, a donut if you want it, chat a little bit, and then there's an hour and a half of unstructured, here's a topic, let's start talking. And I stumbled across these, whenever they started, I don't know, probably four or five years ago, they've been doing it for that long, I think, and it's just been really, really valuable, just to sit and listen and learn from a perspective that isn't centered in Bloomington. There, Noka Henepin is there, occasionally one of the meetings will be held over at Richfield, it moves around, the venue moves around, but it's really nice to hear from districts that are larger than Bloomington and districts that are smaller, just how they handle community engagement. How do you handle, one of the topics on Friday was board self-governance, and what does that mean? What does that mean when all the board members are, how do you get all the board members on the same page? What do you do when somebody isn't on the same page? Community engagement, what is community? What is engagement? Where, do you ask community to come to you? Do you go to community? And it's just really been valuable as a board member, just to hear a different perspective, to say, oh, you tried that, that's really interesting, how did that work out? You tried this, you know, we tried that, and this was the result. Can, you know, maybe we can find a different way of trying that, instead of saying, we tried it and we don't want to do it anymore, let's just try another way, maybe there's a different way of addressing whatever this conversation is. And just to, from a board perspective, working off of an agenda that has item, another item, another item, another item, and another item, it's really refreshing to take one or two talking points in a room full of, there was 15 people, sometimes it's more, sometimes it's less, but right around there, a room full of 15 people who all have great ideas and who all want to raise their hand and speak, and just say, go for it. And so I want to give kudos to the Minnesota School Board Association, their staff, they came up from St. Peter, and there's usually a couple of them, sometimes three, and they just say, okay, here it is, we're going to start it, and it's your conversation, so go for it and have fun. Occasionally, they need to dip in and just sort of redirect. It's sometimes, you know, when you get 15 different board members, there's a bird walk that happens in there, but it's really, really been valuable, so I could gush on and on about this particular opportunity, but it's an opportunity that I think if everyone could look into it, if you have an opportunity, it happens usually early in the morning, so if there's another something going on, they understand, but there's at least four of them during the school year. Look into it, you know, sign up, fill your tank. Roseville was a, was a long, I had to leave early to get there to beat traffic, but it certainly is worth it. It really is worth it, and I know Beth, you came to the last one, yeah.
Yeah, I've come to a number of them.
Yeah, it's really, it's very beneficial. Okay, I'll stop, that was supposed to be short.
Okay, I had a chance to attend the, I think they're family breakfast or special friends breakfast at both Ridgeview and Indian Mounds Elementary, and wow, it's just so great to see so many people that show up at these events for our kids, and then they got at Indian Mounds, they went, I also went to the classroom then afterwards, so the families went to visit the classroom, so that was very interesting, there was a grandfather there that was telling his grandson about his school experience, and the same grade level that he is now, so it was interesting. I also attended the rally at Indian Mounds, I think that was Friday afternoon, and Principal Coons there was taped to the wall during the rally, so that was the excitement there, and the kids definitely thought that was, it was like a reward thing, you know, they did, and they got to, certain students got to go up and help tape him to the wall, and then staff also got a turn to put a piece of tape on, and I put a piece of tape. So, you know, he was very much, you know, just a good trooper for his students, and, you know, they're just roaring laughing at some of the silly things some of the staff did at sticking the tape on him, so it was very good. And then the Special Education Community Advisory Committee met, and that had several topics, they did an early childhood update, and then they talked about Jefferson Coffee House, I don't know if everybody's familiar with Coffee House, but that happens at Jefferson where the special ed students run the coffee house and serve the coffee house and get the food and do the money and all that kind of stuff, and anybody can go to it, and there's, I know there's donuts and other things, and coffee, and I think hot chocolate, et cetera, et cetera, so there was some conversation about that. And then they are working on a disability awareness walk that this group would like to host in the spring, so they're just working on some of the details of that, and when it'll be, and kind of how they want to organize it, and getting kind of some of the stuff people working on the dance did, getting permission from the city to use a park, and finding out what permits they need and that kind of stuff, they're just kind of getting started on it, so that was most of the meeting, so that's it, thank you. Oh, I have one more thing though, I just want to add, along with Director Bennett, what a wonderful job, I know Shante had to leave, but wonderful job you guys did, and what I was so impressed about when it was all over, there was many students there still being very responsible, doing all the work to clean up too, and you know, a lot of times people sneak out at that time, but not this group. They were all there to the last minute, making sure everything was put away, and everything was exactly the way it was supposed to be before they walked out the door, so I just want to say hats off, you guys did a great job.
Thank you. Director Sarr, anything? Director Bibi, did you have one?
Oh, just fun listening for a change.
Thank you.
Well, I have to say, I just really enjoyed the opportunity to work with the students. I went in early on Friday to help with decorations, and I basically just kept interacting with students because they were doing the work, and I don't know, trying to give them a few tips here and there when they were having trouble with the streamers, but they got it done without my tips. I had a very interesting time the last couple of weeks, I went to the Association of Metro School District's annual conference, and they actually had a system, well, they wanted to introduce us to what was happening in the Minneapolis School District, which is similar to what we have in our Office of Educational Equity, where we have liaisons that go into our community or connect with our families, and very appreciative of that, but they were trying to find out how to be able to survey the people in their community, specifically their minority community, where languages were a barrier, and, you know, transportation and, and they realized that they couldn't just send out an email, or a mailing, or do a phone survey, that wasn't going to work, because the response is just so limited in that type of a survey. And so they have developed what they call parent evaluators, and they had five different evaluators there, and some of them had translators, to share what they were able to communicate to their ethnic community, as well as what their ethnic community wanted to communicate to the district. It was fascinating, and it was very enjoyable, and I spoke with some of the people afterwards and just really thanked them. I think there's some real value in that. So anyways, if any of you'd like to know more, I have that information. They also flew a speaker in who talked about educating your community within your district, meaning your employees, teachers, staff, all, you know, all those people on your payroll, and volunteers and that, about your financial picture, about finances, because what they found was that the messages that were going out into the community were not correct pieces of information, and so then people out in the community were coming at the district saying, well, I was told this, and I was told that, and there were lots of misinformation statements. And so it was excellent, and I had access to this, it was so valuable, and it helped me so much to learn more about the picture. And then I also went to the delegate assembly training, along with Maureen and Nellie on that Saturday, and that was very interesting, it was a lot of information, really fast, and so if any of you on the board are interested in seeing those, you know, please talk to one of us, we have a three-ring binder this thick. How many, how many were there, 28 or something resolutions? And that's after many of those that had come in were actually, you know, put into, okay, these are all of this category, and so that's one resolution now. So I really appreciate MSB for their advocacy work they do on behalf of school boards, and so we will be preparing, as we read through those again, for the conference and delegate assembly, which will take place on December 6th and 7th. And then I had a chance to play and be with parents for a STEM night with the Early Childhood Education Group over at Pond Center, and they said they had 120 families come, which was almost double what they'd had at the last time they had one of these nights. And the last time it was not a STEM event, it was a movement event, just getting kids to move and that, but parents were just so encouraged, and there were some of our translators and liaisons over there to help with families coming, to translate if necessary, and I just enjoyed playing with the kids and talking with parents, and they're doing a great job over there, so thank you.
Thank you, Director. The highlight definitely is the work of our students, amazing work with the dance and putting together the concept of One Bloomington and bringing it into our values of school and who we are in the school district, that was fascinating, and seeing them work through this, putting it all together through the several weeks that this was planned and organized, that was something that I truly appreciate. The work that you two did, along with Shante, and the work that all the students that worked with you did as well, you know, there were several people behind this, and I also appreciate the fact that our students were well behaved, and everything was just fine, it was great, so there was no issues at all, so I think it really shows of the great things that all of our students can do and accomplish in our school district. And then I, like Director Bibi said, I attended the MSBA delegate assembly, pre-delegate assembly, so this is where different resolutions that have been proposed by school districts and school boards, and sometimes just one individual are brought to MSBA for consideration, and so this is kind of like the first day, the pre-delegate is the day for, to go over several resolutions, I believe it was about 27 resolutions, and like Director Bibi mentioned, this procedure goes pretty fast, we just go over them, and then our job is to review that and later then vote on which resolutions we believe we should approve during the delegate assembly on December 6th and 7th. So the resolutions that were brought included items related to school finance, taxation, school board and employee relations, governance, meaning local control, school boards, and education programs. So what I'm actually going to do is I have the PDF of the resolutions, and then I will share it with the board either tonight or tomorrow, along with our administration, because there are some of them that maybe the three of us would like to get some feedback from administration. Some of them are related to human relations, others are related to finances, and even research, even the, you know, there's a relationship there with some of the research done, so anyway, I'll do that tonight or sometime tomorrow.
Thank you. Minnesota School Board Association will be presenting the President's Award to Board Member Nellie Corman during the MSBA Leadership Conference in January. This award recognizes school board members who have completed 300 or more hours of MSBA meetings and activities, so congratulations, Board Member Corman. We need a, we need a motion to establish a study session on Wednesday, December 11th at 6:00 PM here in the boardroom. The city will be presenting city and community information.
So moved.
Second. Do I hear it? Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to have a study session Wednesday, December 11th at 6:00 PM, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None.
Thank you, includes my report, thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anything else to come before the board this evening? If not, we are adjourned.